This is the Newberry County Council Work Session for the fifth of June, 5:00 p.m. We're going to adjust our schedule a little bit and we're going to actually have our executive session first on the agenda due to some unforeseen reasons, but we're gonna go ahead and do our executive session first and then we will move on in the work session after that. Do I have a motion that we go into executive session? Motion by Mr. Sees, second by Mr. Reader. All in favor? Yes, we are now going to executive session.
We did.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're already taken care of.
Okay.
So we're gonna call it a six o'clock meeting in order, sorry, we're running a little bit behind, we got, had some business to take care of, but it's good to see all of you out tonight. Uh, we're gonna open with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today in humility and faith. We thank you for all you've given, given us and the many blessings in our lives. We ask for your guidance and strength. Show us the way and fill us with courage and wisdom. Help us to remember your love and to be faithful in our service to you. Give us the patience and understanding to face all life's challenges with grace. Dear Lord, be with those who are sick and suffering, give them comfort and peace. Gracious God, lay us shield over our law enforcement officers, firefighters, first responders, and our military as they put their lives at risk to protect us. We humbly ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call. Yeah. Got a little, do a little change in here. That's kinda bikers.
It was. That's in violation of the protocol.
Again, we thank you all for coming out tonight. Glad to see so many people involved in county business. First item is the adoption of the consent agenda, which is Newberry County Council Work Session, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, Newberry County Council Meeting, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, Newberry County Council Public Safety and Courts Committee, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. We have motion to accept as presented.
What's up, Lou?
Motion by Mr. Fulmer, second by Mr. Curry, all in favor? Carries unanimously. Uh, any additions, deletions in the, the agenda?
Mr. Moore.
Motion that we accept the agenda as presented. Mr. Curry makes a motion, Mr. Sees second, all in favor? Is unanimous. Public appearance, we have Mr. Allen Jenkins in the crowd, Chairman of Newberry County Republican Party. The floor is yours, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Council. I appreciate the time and effort that you guys, uh, commit to our county to perform your duties. Um, we appreciate you. Um, I'm Allen Jenkins, I'm the, uh, Chairman of the Republican Party, and part of my duties as Chairman is to recruit and assist those that are interested in running for public office. And it was during that, uh, duty that I current, that I discovered currently the only qualification for county treasurer and auditor is to be eighteen years of age and registered to vote. Our current county budget is more than seventy-eight million dollars. These positions hold significant responsibility over our county's finances and should be filled by individuals with appropriate educational background and experience. In many counties across the United States, these roles are hired positions requiring relevant qualifications. For instance, in Greewink County, the treasurer is required to have a bachelor's degree in business administration or related field. This ensures that those handling public funds understand financial management and principles. The current system leaves room for unqualified individuals to manage our public funds. This could lead to mismanagement or misuse of funds, which would ultimately affect all residents of Newberry County. We need professionals who understand physical policy, budgeting processes, auditing standards, not just any registered voter who is eighteen years of age. Let us advocate for change. Let us ensure that we entrust our county finances into capable hands for making our county treasurer and auditor hired positions with appropriate qualifications. We, as a party, began a petition and have discovered there's broad interest throughout the county in making this change. Due to timing, we are here to ask Council to use an ordinance to add the question on this year's general election ballot to allow the citizens of Newberry County to decide if this is the direction they choose going forward. This is in no way reactionary to the performance or service of the current treasurer or auditor. This is an effort to protect Newberry County and its future moving forward. I thank you for your time, consideration, and your service to our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Next on the agenda, find it. All right. A proclamation declaring June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, Juneteenth, in recognition of the abolition of slavery in the United States of America. And I will read the proclamation. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January first, eighteen sixty-three, declaring the slaves in Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the thirteenth amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed some two and a half, one half years to June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, in reaching authorities and African Americans in the South Carolina and southwestern United States. And whereas Emancipation Day observations are held on different days in different states in the South and Southwest and other parts of the nation. And whereas, not, June nineteenth has a special meaning to African American, African Americans, and is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and nineteenth, and has been celebrated by the African American community for over a hundred and fifty years. And whereas, the annual Juneteenth celebration in the county of Newberry will take place on June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Now, therefore, Newberry County Council hereby declares June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four as Juneteenth in the county of Newberry, South Carolina, and urges all citizens to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African Ameri-, African American history and in the heritage of our nation and country, county, as well as encourages all citizens to attend the Juneteenth celebration on June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Proclaim and approve this fifth day of June, two thousand twenty-four. Sincerely, the Newberry County Council. Do we have somebody? Mr. Jackie Holmes and Mr.?
Call.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion.
Oh, sir.
We accept this proclamation.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Sees, all in favor of sitting this?
It is unanimous. Now, we'll bring him in.
Mr. Call, Mr. Jackie. I'm glad to be back again. Good luck. Good to see you all. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Next on the agenda, uh, consideration of annual indexing of elected official salaries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that, um, we have budgeted four percent of, uh, COLA for all of our employees, and I would like to make a motion that that be across the board for employees and elected officials, excluding, of course, County Council, but, uh, that we apply that uniformly.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second? All right, have a second by Mr. Reader, any discussion? All right, all in favor? It is unanimous.
I should have, uh, I'm sorry, I should have made a clarification, though. In addition, uh, we will be rewarding certain department individuals with the retention increase, and that will be separate from the four percent COLA.
Correct.
And that'll be done, uh, just for some of our operators and law enforcement.
That's right. Everybody understand that? Very good.
Very good.
I didn't hear what he thought I said, Tim. All right. Moving on, number six, uh, ordinance number zero five zero one two zero two four, an ordinance acting on request to amend the official zoning act established pursuant to zoning ordinance number one two two four oh one, as revised and amended by zoning ordinance number oh six one 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 six and codified in chapter one fifty-three of Newberry County Code of Ordinances, establishing zoning clarification in districts as to reason on one real estate parcel totaling eleven point seven oh acres designated as TMS number three three six dash three from general commercial to industrial. This is the third reading. Any changes to anything?
No, no, sir.
All right, do I have a motion that this be third reading? Mr. Sees has a, made a motion, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Reader, any discussion? All in favor? Mr. Johnson? I think it is unanimous.
All right. All right, sounds good, Mr. Johnson.
All right, number seven, ordinance number zero five dash zero three dash two zero two four, an ordinance to provide appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, for the Newberry County budget for county ordinary purposes and for other county purposes for which the county may levy a tax and receive revenues to provide for the levy of taxes on all taxable personal and real property in Newberry County for all county purposes, including sufficient tax to pay the principal and the interest of outstanding indebtedness of Newberry County payable during said fiscal year, to provide for matters relating to Newberry County, and to provide for the expenditure of said taxes and other revenues received by the county during said fiscal year, and to provide for borrowing in anticipation of tax collection by the issuance of one or more tax anticipation by the issuance of one or more tax anticipation notes if necessary. This is the third reading. Do I have a motion that this be third reading? Mr. Scurry makes a motion, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Reader, any discussion? All in favor? Mr. Johnson? I think it is unanimous. All right, number seven, county council may take action following executive session on matters discussed during executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to allow the county administration to change our insurance current general and liability property insurance coverage, change it to SCAC insurance from our current carrier that will save the county a significant amount of money, but I guess I can deal with that under discussion, but anyway, I would like to make that motion that we make that change and allow administration to do that.
I have a motion to accept the change to our insurance, second by Mr. Fulmer, any discussion? Any more discussion?
Well, the, we're not doing it arbitrarily, just for anybody listening in and for those here tonight, this gives our, us an opportunity to increase coverage, reduce some of our deductibles, and at the same time, save overall costs on insurance. So, I appreciate what administration and staff have done in their research to always try to save our taxpayers money. Thank you.
And I will concur, anytime we can save some money and better insurance, that's not normal. So, we're very fortunate, very fortunate. So, thank y'all for all the hard work researching that.
But, Mr. Mike here, I would echo that and say, not only are we going to save this money, this is not something we do on likely, something we've been looking at for a couple of years, and the tiny opportunities in the liability reduction alone make this worthwhile unless less than $100,000 savings that we're going to be able to accomplish for the taxpayers. So, I enjoy this.
Very, very good, very valid point, so. All right. So, all in favor of making this change? It is unanimous. Appointments, we have an opening, my opening, on Central Midlands Council of Governments.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Carl Sees to fill that opening.
We have a nomination for Mr. Carl Sees, any other nominations?
I second.
I have a second. Any discussion?
I respectfully approve that nomination, what a great guy.
And I will be glad for him to take my pos, my spot on, sure he'll do a great job. All in favor of Mr. Sees taking the Central Midlands Council of Government seat? It is unanimous. Public comments, we do have a few signed up to speak. Ms. Donna Lomenek is the first signed up on the sheet.
I feel like I'm gonna have to speak tonight. I am Donna Lomenek, your Newbury County Auditor. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I really am not sure why Mr. Jenkins and the Republican Party is wanting Newbury County to change their formal government from county administrator to county manager, which requires the auditor to be appointed and not elected. Only two counties in the state have county manager form of government. This was tried in 2006, but the council at that time voted it down because, as John Caldwell stated, "This is the most ridiculous thing I have heard in the last 25 years. This is totally out of line to even consider with all the success we have had with this form of government." I have run for office five times and had opposition the very first time. I do want you to know that all five times I was asked to switch parties, and each time I said, "What can you do for me that the Democratic Party can't do?" The auditor's office is an elected office, but politics does not enter into our operation of the office. We are governed by state law, and it is my policy to treat all citizens equally. I personally do not want to see the rights of the people taken away by removing elected officials. What have I done since 2009 wrong to even make the Republican Party want this, except not change parties? I have collaborated closely with the council, administrators, and staff to make sure that Newbury County taxes were held at a minimum. No one has called or visited my office pertaining to the petition that is going around stating the current system leaves room for unqualified individuals. I take great offense to this statement as I am the most qualified individual for the office. At an open council meeting, a previous administrator stated, "I was the best auditor in the state. I have served on many committees for the auditors, auditors throughout the state, and I served as president of three different organizations that county auditors belong to." Several individuals have informed me that the position of county auditor could go to an individual that was not qualified if Newbury County citizens are allowed to vote for the auditor. I have confidence and respect for Newbury County citizens that they would vote for the person that is qualified and not vote for an unqualified candidate. They have been voting for this office since 1868, when Somerfield Montgomery was elected. I have relatives and friends that are veterans and thought so I could have the right to vote. I strongly feel that I would be letting them down if I didn't voice my opinion on Mr. Jenkins and the Republican Party's proposal. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Donna. Always good to see you.
I totally agree with Ms. Lomenek, and my motto is, if it's not broken, it's nothing to be fixed.
All right. All right, next on, signed up is Ms. Karen Linder-Smith.
Hi, I wanted to thank Council for allowing me to speak. I'm Karen Linder-Smith, Newbury County Treasurer. I was hired in the treasurer's office in 1988 by Mr. George Summer. I have worked my way up from the counter audibly up to being treasurer. I've been in the office for 36 years. I'm very qualified. I like being elected, so I have a voice for the people. I enjoy working with people, I help with problems, I just take offense of them saying that I'm not qualified. And in my opinion, a county manager type of government would put control, more control than needed, to one person. And like I say, I go through audits every year, county audits every year, and we not had a problem, so I'm like everybody else, if it's not broke, don't fix it. So, I would appreciate y'all allowing it, and I want to be elected. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Karen. All right, next we have Mr. Michael Toomey. Sorry if I messed up your last name.
It's Tom. Good evening, County Council, thank you for the opportunity, allowing me to speak. What I'd like to speak to you about is the ordinance 153, 159, the keeping of chickens. I don't know if you saw this that I wrote to Mr. Schacker, I said that, that I sent. Anyway, I rewrote the ordinance a little bit to include, so it's fair and equitable to all neighbors and all, most importantly, to the environmental of Lake Murray. The first thing is, to make it more fair, included in my provision 11, I said the chicken coop must have screening. So, this would allow the neighbors not be able to see the other neighbors' chickens who don't want to. Me, I don't want to see, smell, or hear chickens. So, I think it's only fair that we should have screening. I took that particular ordinance from Lexington County, our neighbors. The second thing is, there is, I belong to a member of Lake Murray Watch, and my property is on Lake Murray, and I think that the chicken coop should be 75 feet from the environmental buffer. I talked to zoning last week, we're definitely going to be, the way the ordinance is written, it says 50 feet from the 360, which puts it 25 feet into the environmental buffer. So, the question was, was whose land is that? In some cases, it belongs to Dominion, in other cases, it belongs to the owner. They were grandfathered in, and now we're going to be in direct conflict with Project 16 of Lake Murray, the federal standards. So, therefore, that needs to be changed. The third thing is, my neighbor has an illegal chicken coop, and it's been there for almost two years, and it's a grandfather clause that I put in here, and basically saying that if the chicken coops are, meet today's standard and giving the people time to bring them up to today's standards, that they, in a reasonable time determined by county ordinance. That's it. I ask you to seriously consider those changes. Appreciate it. Any questions? No, thank you so much.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, if it suits Council, to ask our administrator to take Mr. Toomey's recommendations in the form of amendments to the, we passed first reading on the ordinance. Make those recommendations in forms of amendments so that we can vote on each one of those recommendations along with our second reading, and we can vote to approve any, all, or none separately on our second reading.
Ten-four. Will do. Any other discussion? Any other person like to speak? I saw the sign that it's big, but I'm sure.
I didn't sign up.
Sure.
I'd like to say something that I have knowledge of, in that I haven't read the entire ordinance, but it says you're limited to six chickens. My daughter lives in Cincinnati, Cincinnati proper, she can look down over downtown. They're allowed to have up to 12 chickens based on the size of their lot. This is a very rural county outside of the city of Newbury, and I think that's something you need to look at as well as an amendment, to allow larger properties to have a larger number of chickens, because somebody that has a very small lot, six chickens, is fine, but somebody who really depends on that for food supply might want to do 12 chickens. And if they have a larger lot area, and some people in the rural area may have three acres and could, could manage 12 chickens just as well as six.
Thank you. Okay, we could add that to as a public development. Anyone else? All right, Ms. Beth.
Okay. This is a chicken deal. Is this for the whole county, or is this just for the lake? This permanent ordinance, whatever.
For Newbury County, correct?
Yes, except, except what it does is it creates chickens as a conditional use within all of our residential districts except R2, which is our largest, most expansive district, which would apply to your area of the county, where they're allowed already.
So, I can keep my 16 chickens.
Yes.
And don't have to do anything else.
That's already permitted, yeah.
Because I got 45 acres, and you know, I thought I can put my chickens anywhere, you know? But that's what I want to know, if I can keep my 16 chickens.
This is, this is applicable to the higher density residential areas, yeah.
Okay, okay. That's why I want to. Because I didn't want to go home and tell my husband, "You got to get rid of your chickens."
We're gonna have fried chicken for dinner.
That's right. Any other chicken discussion? Or anything else? Anybody else want to, have anything to, want to get off their chest? All right. Comments from the county administrator?
No, sir, I think I'm, I think I was good. We've had some good discussions.
Comments from Council, Mr. Fulmer.
Nothing really, just would like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Certainly is a good day whenever citizens are involved in their, their government, and thank everybody for coming and those that spoke, thank you for your, your comments.
Mr. Hill?
Yes, a very dear friend of mine passed last night, and that friend is, is an appointee on the Joint Planning Commission. He served the county as, in a voluntary position for many years, and so I'd just like everybody to keep Victor on in your prayers.
He will be missed.
And his family in your prayers and thoughts.
He will be missed. Mr. Scurry?
We certainly want to thank all elected officials, backfield jobs, standing up, telling the world, you running now, you can run it later. What it will take for you to stay there, y'all do that. Don't let me change your mind, no one else change your mind. You ran that job, you running now, very successfully, don't let nobody change your mind.
Thank you.
Continue to do what you're doing now, and God bless you more and more. Thank you.
Reader?
I agree with that, because if we start changing things, then we don't know where we might be. Things are running very well right now. Each and every other person has an opportunity to run for that position if they choose to do so. We don't have to put in no new county. We're doing well, at least I think we're doing well, and I'm sure majority of the county think we're doing well. There may be a few out there that want to change things, and see, that's the problem with the country now, we too busy trying to change things that is already right. We need to think before we start mentioning doing stuff that, that will not make Newbury County a better place. Because this county is where it needs to be.
Please.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, participating. I'd like to thank Donna and Karen also for getting up, talking about their positions and their background and history, and everybody getting up and discussing the chicken ordinance and adding different things that maybe we didn't think about when we wrote the ordinance that helps to everybody in the community. And also like to, thanks for being appointed, looking forward to working on the Central Midlands County of Government, and hopefully I'll be able to do such a job as Mr. Shealy has done before me.
Sure he'll do better.
Thanks for coming out tonight.
Mr. Johnson, Chairman Johnson, you still online?
Yeah, he's not.
All right. Well, I will echo all those comments. Glad to see everyone out tonight, glad to hear everyone's voice, that's why we're here, to hear your voice, that's, that's why we're elected, to do what you, you ask of us. Again, please keep Victor Lawrence's family in your prayers, he will be missed greatly. He served his county well. All right. Future meetings, we got the Executive Committee, June 10th at 6:00 p.m., Newbury County Council Work Session, June 19th at 5:00 p.m., Newbury County Council Meeting, June 19th at 6:00 p.m. Independence Day, July 4th, Newbury County offices will be closed. Public Safety and Courts Committee, July 8th at 6:00 p.m. Newbury County Council Work Session, July 17th at 5:00 p.m., and Newbury County Council, July 17th at 6:00 p.m. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll stand in for you.
I'll take that. Mr. Hill, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Fulmer, seconds. All in favor? We are adjourned.[1679.13][1679.13]